Please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the June 29 edition of our Board of Commissioners meeting. We would like to remind everybody that this is a public meeting. We are recording it via audio and visual as well. And at this time, awards, recognitions, and correspondence. Oh, I do want to point out that Commissioner Murdock is virtual. Is that correct?
No, it's correct.
Okay. So, just so the audience knows, he is online. Any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I have none.
None from me, and here are none from Commissioner Murdock. Approval of the previous minutes from May 24, 2025?
Move for approval?
Aye, President.
Got a motion, a second. I'll clear the motion. Say aye.
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 Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we would like to recognize anybody in the public who wants to visit with something other than what is already on the agenda, and I do believe we have some folks in the audience who want to address the board. Richard, did you want to speak?
Dave first.
Okay.
Whatever order you want to do it. So, I'm first.
You want to?
Thank you.
I do want to remind everybody, we do have a very lengthy agenda, so...
Yes, yes, that's usually the case. The first thing I want to say is, I'm here to...
Look, I'm sorry, Dave, would you announce who you are and your address for the record?
Dave Price, 804-88ZURBA, Z-E-R-B-A, Road, Athena, Oregon. I'm here as representing Blue Mountain Alliance, president of Blue Mountain Alliance. And Blue Mountain Alliance has been in existence for a good many years, primarily dealing with the revision of the ordinance that's in question with Nolan Hills project. And that has been going on for many years. I mean, like, 10, 15 years at least. So, BMA, representing the people of Yumitilla County, really, has worked on that and got the revised ordinance approved by the Board of Counsel in June of 2011. It was promptly legally challenged, and that challenge took, and the ordinance did not become effective until that was complete in November of 2013. So, that's how long that 152, 616-HH, as it stands, is, has been in effect. The question on that ordinance comes with Nolan Hills when the Department of Energy/FSAC identified their position to ignore part of that ordinance. And that part of the ordinance involved, of course, the two-mile setback, which is pretty notorious, and most people know about it. That position that was stated by the department actually occurred sometime back in the process, but actually surfaced with their draft order. And that was back in about April or so of this year. So, what they did is, the Department of Energy came out and said that due to the fact that the applicable substantive criteria of the two-mile setback did not meet the Council's definition. And so, they were going to, that was not required, the two-mile setback then, is not required in the two-mile setback. So, that, of course, is something that, first of all, I don't understand, and secondly, I don't think it can be allowed. And it has to be challenged legally. Now, the history on this thing is that when the legal challenges took place in that ordinance from 11 to 2013, one of the issues that came up before the Supreme Court was the two-mile setback. And the Supreme Court ruled, and I have a copy of Dan Kern's letter here, that's our attorney, I think you have one, but if you don't, I'll... Do you have one?
I've seen his copy.
Okay. I have a copy for you, if you want it.
Sure, I'll take it.
All right, good. And here, I'll just hand them to you, and you can give them to me later. So, the Supreme Court ruled, and you will see that in Dan's letter, that the ordinance, and specifically, the two-mile setback, does meet applicable substantive criteria. And it plainly says that. So, I don't understand the issue, and... But it cannot be allowed to stand. Now, one of the other things that I think that you need to be aware of, other than the Supreme Court decision regarding that issue, has to be a couple of points, and I believe Doug brought those out, and that had to do with the special advisory group, that's you. And Doug dug out a couple of OARs that pertains to that, and it is apparently from the, it is apparent in the record, that the county, as the SAG, did submit comments, and that's acknowledged in the minutes of the May 26 meeting, that, so they have achieved standing in it. With one of the OARs that Doug came up with, shows that if that's stipulated by the SAG, then it must be applied, shall be applied. So, I don't think there's an argument on the fact that the county submitted testimony that the two-mile setback, the ordinance, and all that met the substantive requirement. I don't think there's any argument on that, so I don't understand the legal, what's going on legally. So, I wanted those points to be considered by the commissioners. The Supreme Court decision, what Dan said, I thought he did a very good job of that. The OARs that Doug said in the letter to the Department of Energy, and I think that needs to definitely be challenged. Now, as far as I know, and from what I heard this morning, the decision from DOE and the FSAC on the draft order for Nolan Hills has apparently not been made. But I think that you look in the, all the information, documents, and records, and everything else of DOE and FSAC, the position has not changed. They are, their position is that the two-mile setback, as far as Nolan Hills is concerned, is not a requirement. And I think that we must assume, then, that somehow we must respond to the Department of Energy/FSAC and bring to their attention these points that I brought out, plus more that you might be able to think of, and say, hey, you know, this ordinance must be followed. It's not a voluntary thing, it is required. And I think it's time to kind of refresh that with the Department of Energy. So, the other thing I wanted to mention was, is that this decision is extremely important. It is more than Nolan Hills, and it is more than a two-mile setback. Because what this simply means, from the way the position of the Department of Energy is, is if they see a part of an ordinance, or an ordinance, or some other requirement, regulation by the county, that doesn't, they don't quite agree with, they just ignore it? And my position is, is no, they cannot do that. And so, I'm here to urge the county, Board of Commissioners, to follow up on this, even though that a decision has not been made. I think we need to follow up and refresh and say, hey, this ordinance must be followed. It's a requirement, and any other ordinances that might be from Yumitilla County that's pertinent with this project. And there's going to be a lot of them, because you're going to be dealing with a lot of different elements, power lines and all that that goes with these types of projects. So, the other thing is, I think we need to remember that this is a precedent thing, and it will have an impact on future projects in the county. And so, I think it's important that it kind of requires the attention and action of commissioners to move forward on this thing, to make sure that the county understands, the Department of Energy understands, that the county will not tolerate this kind of a decision. That's basically what I had to say this morning. And I urge you to read Dan Kern's letter, it's very good, I think it brings up very pertinent legal points, and Doug has brought out some really good points, and I think we need to take those and pursue this whole matter. Do we have any questions, or anything?
Nope. Thank you, Dave.
No, I've had multiple conversations with you, with Richard and...
Yeah, you both have, right.
So, I appreciate that. I do want to reiterate my stance to you. I've told you, and I've told Richard many times, I am not in favor of removing the two-mile setback, I'm in favor of leaving it in place as written, and I will not vote to change that. And I've told you that multiple times, and I'll tell you that again, here in a public setting.
Right.
So, just in case you're wondering where I sit, that's where I sit on that issue.
Yeah, yeah. It makes me nervous that, technically, I mean, I believe the decision's been made. I believe they're in the process of finalizing the final order. And to setback and let it take place without, without standing up and saying, no, this is not acceptable, I think that's where we're at. I think we have to do that. Stand up and say, no, this is not acceptable. Because there's no evidence that the Department of Energy has reversed or retracted that position. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Richard, ready to jump out of his chair? You're in here.
I'm Richard Jolly, 544-62, Upper Dry Creek Road, Weston, Oregon. So, I was in contact with the Department of Energy, and they are writing up the proposed order and in the process, and their stance is that they're going to continue with, they've made a determination that they feel that our county is, they are going to overlook our ordinances. So, and they are basing that on a case that they had this last year.
Real quick, can I ask you a quick question on that? Do you know who you spoke with?
Yes. Karen Sloan.
And...
And I, and she, yes, and she sent me the history of the case that they were citing for making the determination that they did. I'm not giving you all the 106 pages, I'm just giving you the cover of that case.
Thank you for that.
Okay? So, and that case was decided by the administrative law judge that was overseeing the council at that time. So, it's not even a case that went to the Supreme Court, such as ours already has. And because we weren't allowed to give it into public record, they don't, they have to look at it like it's not, ours isn't even in existence, but it is in their records. Because the case that we're citing is Blue Mountain Alliance versus FSAC. And so, for them to overlook what we've, what we've already done is, I can't even understand it. So, I believe that the Oregon Department of Energy and FSAC are not being forthright on the determination that the county ordinances are not applicable substantive criteria. Although the comments from BMA didn't get into, entered into the testimony on the citing, it was BMA versus FSAC that went to the Supreme Court and had the ruling from them that the regulation was applicable substantive criteria itself at our Supreme Court. The DOE and FSAC instead chose to base their opinion on the ruling from the administrative law judge for the Obsidian Project from Lake County that was not taken to the Supreme Court, and it wasn't contested at that time. So, the county needs to contest the proposed order as it comes out over the Nolan Hills project, and enter into your record the backup of the history involved through the Supreme Court, and I believe that in itself will substantiate the claim that our ordinances are in place. And so, if you entered Dan Kern's letter into testimony and seek legal counsel to get this straightened out. And we also believe that Commissioner Murdock should not recuse himself, because this is not a site specific, there is a site involved, but it's not site specific. It's county ordinance specific. And so, if you want your county ordinances to stand, and you're planning, as you've planned for your county to be developed, then you need to defend that from the state. And I believe, and you have Dan Kern's letter already, so thank you very much.
I'm making my chicken scratches all over as we speak, so, thank you. Sunny?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sunny Ganforth, 225 Maple Avenue, and in Mountain Free Water. And I wanted to have two items. One, you've already heard from some people that I, from Blue Mountain Alliance on, and the other one will be second. So, recently, I spoke with Commissioner Doran regarding the Nolan Hills project and FSAC. That was a very nice visit, very much. But I'm here today to speak into the record the need of the county to get a land use attorney to make sure that they are on the right track of holding FSAC to the Supreme Court decision of BMA versus FSAC. As you know, FSAC is comprised of a group of citizens that do not have the expertise in citing energy projects. However, the staff of the Department of Energy, Oregon Department of Energy, ODO, they do, and they know of the Supreme Court decision of BMA versus FSAC. My question is, is ODO advising FSAC correctly? I'm not discounting the counsel of, County Council Doug Olson's device, advice, but counsel by a land use attorney is appropriate for the commissioners in this case. The Nolan Hills project will set precedent for future energy projects in Yumitilla County. And as I'm understanding, it's not that the project won't follow our two-mile setback, it, the problem is, FSAC is not recognizing the, this Supreme Court case, that it is substantive criteria that they must follow. And it will not set a precedent for the rest of the state, but it will set a precedent for the rest of any other energy projects coming into Yumitilla County. So, this is the first project citing through FSAC since the 2013 Supreme Court decision here in Yumitilla County. It's the commissioner's fiduciary responsibility to make sure you have done your due diligence in making sure that this project citing by FSAC is correct from the start. Commissioner Murdock may want to recuse himself regarding the Nolan Hills project, but he cannot recuse himself from decisions that affect the county and future projects. The second item I wanted to ask about is, what is the date of the public hearing for looking into a county administrator or manager?
We don't have public hearing set up for that yet. We just started having preliminary internal discussions.
Okay. So, I would like to be notified of whenever that is, and I have one recommendation. Until I pulled up, there's been lots of changes to the county website, and until I pulled up the actual agenda, I had no idea that this could be attended virtually. So, it might just have been on the other page of the county, you know, where your agendas and meetings, that, hey, you can attend this virtually, without even looking up the agenda. Because it wasn't until I pulled the agenda that the link was there. I had no idea. Just a FYI. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate your work. Can we send a letter to FSAC, you know, reiterating our stance?
Well, I mean, that was what your comment letter said, and that's what Mr. Walder drafted up, and that's what he pointed out to them.
Okay. So, at this point, we have to wait for a decision to be made before we can contest anything, or what's...
Right, we can't contest anything before there's an actual decision. You have submitted your letter, though, so you have standing to pursue appeal or contesting the order.
Okay. So, we do have standing to appeal?
Yes, I mean, we submitted an order in...
I guess, I guess the part that concerns me...
...this out, this issue out.
The thing that concerns me is, you know, I heard Mr. Price say that there was no decision reached yet, but then I heard Mr. Jolly make comment from Karen Sloan, where she had mentioned that decisions aren't even made, basically, and it just hasn't gotten anywhere. So, that was a little concerning to me.
Well, they, they do draft up a proposed order, and that is what is sent out, and that's what we commented on. They have not made a decision yet on their finalized order. I mean, internally, they might still, but until that...
So, we have to wait until the official decision?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from you?
Nope, I think everybody's heard, and you just heard exactly what Mike comments have been said.
Okay. And Commissioner Murdock, did you want to say anything? Or she spoke? Yeah.
Well, I get a little nervous when people use my name as making certain decisions and not. I continue to remind you that I joined Commissioner Schaefer in supporting the two-mile setback and would not vote otherwise. I also have been advised by legal counsel that with respect to independent decisions on Nolan Hills, I need to recuse myself, and that's my position. And, and I get nervous when it's interpreted more broadly.
All right. Granella?
I brought a little bit of extra information on why we need...
For the record, could you...
Oh, my name's Granella Thompson, 51949 Johnson Road, Weston, Oregon. I have a little information for each of you on why we need to setback. This is Georgia's copy. And anyway, try and make sure that, that there's an understanding of how serious we take this. The, and I think that the American way is that government serves at the pleasure and approval of the people, and the people have the power over the government, not the government lording it over the people. And I see this as a conflict that is part of what we're dealing with. The commissioners answer at election time, and people can address commissioners as we are today. Unelected bureaucrats and hidden government are a little harder to deal with, and we get rolled by people like that, making decisions over us when they are not accountable to us at the ballot box. So, that's one of my concerns over what is happening here. The Yumitilla County has that two-mile setback, and I have included some of the valid reasons for it, including this one that states the, the health of the people who have to live near them, and, but, and then the, this one on the chemicals, the harsh chemicals that are in the, the components, and so, when they melt down, or things like that, they're released into the land, and, and the people around them can have problems, health problems because of those. And that, because of those, they can't go in normal landfills. They can't really be recycled at the end of their life. That's been a problem. There's, you know, the ones that are out of date and got dumped over by Mountain Free Water. Well, where should they have gone? Most people don't want to take them. So, there's a problem with that. But the other problem is wildfire. And wildfire, there is a cost of wildfire that the county has to pick up, and if we, if we keep putting these in danger of residences, that cost goes up. So, it's, it's come on us to not place them too close to residents. There's a picture on page 40, I flagged it with orange, on how wind turbulence comes off of the wind towers, and it shows it in fog, and this is how fire would be moved after that. You know, the, the wind just would help the fire take off. The one down by Arlington caused by a wind tower took 2,000 acres of grassland and threatened residents there. There was one in Clickatack County in Washington a few years ago that covered about 300 or 400 acres, maybe as much as 500. So, we have a real concern about losing, having our two-mile setback infringed upon, and we ask that unelected bureaucrats not be allowed to make this decision without us having the defense that, that the commissioners can give us on this. I simply do not trust the unelected bureaucrats, having dealt with them enough, and see in-runs and rollovers of the public. So, we would like them stopped. One other thing is that there's a 10% evaporation rate found at Shepherd's Flat by OSU professors that just increases the fire risk because the land is drier because of the wind turbulence. So, 10% loss of water in Sherman County is rather significant. I mean, I think it's significant in my fields, and we get a lot more rain than they do. So, I just want to make you aware of how serious we take our health and our safety. We want you to defend us on that. Thank you.
Thank you, every time. Any other public comments? Okay. None in the room? What about online? Is there any online?
No.
Okay. I do want to thank you for coming all this way and to address your comment about the online virtual, that's a new state law, all public meetings have to be, we have to have a hybrid option. So, we'll talk to our IT folks to see if we can clean that up, make it a little more readily available. So, I appreciate that. So, again, thank you for coming, you know, this is a perfect opportunity to address the board, you know, and one of the things that came up during this, during this conversation was serial meetings, is that...
That's correct. You have to be careful in contacting multiple commissioners, because that can constitute a public meeting if you talk to one commissioner, even though they're by themselves. So, on this one, I believe Commissioner Doran is the lead on this, so that if you want any communication, probably go just to him. Because if you go to Commissioner Schaefer as well, then that's considered a public meeting, even though it's separate, it's called a serial meeting, it may not make the most sense, but that's what the case law has found, so...
But in this forum, this is where you can address...
Yeah.
Mul, all three of us. So, I wanted to clarify that. And Dave, did you have something else?
I'd just like to interject a comment, Doug, and thank you for that, because I've been in this business quite a while, as you well know, and I had never heard that before. And, and I always thought that, that to be able to contact the individual commissioners was the proper thing to do. I didn't realize the legal aspects of it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's a learning process for all of us. I mean, that would have been, you know, like I said, I should have known that as well and, and mentioned it in our conversation, but, so, that's on me as much as anybody, so...
I do have a question on that, though, Doug, is, I would take it as a public hearing if the commissioners contacted each other, but as a citizen, contacting each commissioner separately...
but as a citizen contacting each commissioner separately, nothing in a, a group conversation. How can that be construed as...
The appellate courts have determined that if one person meets with multiple commissioners or public body members, then that can constitute a quorum for a public meeting.
On the same issue?
On the same issue.
Wow, I had no idea.
I didn't either.
Thank you.
Every day is a learning day.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Okay, you are absolutely free to go. You don't need to sit here and listen to us, but you're more than welcome to.
Well, one more thing, John.
Yeah.
After that conversation, then, our concerns to the commissioners on this particular subject then needs to go through Dan.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's okay. All right, good. All right, thank you.
I know where I stand on it, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving to the business side. Sheriff Software, oh, no, we're gonna... Presentation, I'm sorry, sorry, Paul. So we're gonna, Darren, we want to hear from you first.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad to see you took your hat off.
I asked him a bit.
Oh, you were wearing a duck hat, yeah.
Yeah, you gave me in trouble.
Could you go ahead and do yourself a record, please?
I'm Darren, I'm Barker, and address is 2442 Southwest Nye, Pendleton. And what I have brought to the attention is there's a lot of things going on about, like, COVID-19 and people traveling to get to different places. I mean, the, the market has gone way down for, you know, the public to see different stuff. Well, what I'm trying to bring up is a, a hidden market for our businesses and stuff like that around town. So I'd like to go through this, it very, will be as fast as possible, but I have multiple sclerosis, and I do, you know, kind of stop on some words and stuff like that, so please bear with me. But, okay, disposable income is money available after taxes to spend on essential living expenses. Discretionary income is money available for non-essential items after taxes and basic living expenses have been met. Discretionary income for people working age with people with disabilities is about 21 billion, which is greater than the African-American and Hispanic market segments combined. People with disabilities are not just a solitary market. They are surrounded by family members and friends who also recognize the value of products and services that accommodate all people in society. In that way is, if I can't go, they ain't going. That kind of thing. People with disabilities control $8 trillion in spending cash. People with disability by themselves in the U.S. control approximately $645 billion in disposable income. This now is almost triple that controlled by the Hispanic community. And nondisposable income funds belong to friends and family and that people with disabilities can influence. And if you globalize that, then you're like, ah, then you get $8 trillion in total global purchasing power. The economic damage is, is also the cost of inaccessibility. Because without accessibility for the people with disabilities, that $8 trillion purchasing value goes to your accessible competitor. Our studies find that working-age adults with disabilities are a large and relatively untapped market for the U.S. businesses in the United States. Even with lower overall income, adults with disabilities is a group with a lot of spending power. However, understanding this and serving the customers may require businesses and industries to make changes to their practices and policies, procedures. And this is, I want, like, this is, right down here on court, there's some businesses that have a step to get into. Okay, well, for somebody that's blind or deaf, that doesn't really matter. They can get in, you know, just to one step. For me, that is a, a very big barrier. But to fix that, I mean, you go down to Walmart and buy a $10 doorbell, a wireless doorbell, and it says if you need assistance, press the doorbell. You come out with a little folding ramp, you put it out there. Now I'm inside spending my money. So it's, you know, very simple, you know, and that's what we want to make sure that we let people know is how simple it is to be accessible. Spending power of people with disabilities can expand your business. Investment into accessibility is investment into a multi-billion dollar market composed of millions of buyers who have networks of millions more. Last one is ADA inclusion is not about, or disability inclusion is not about the ADA compliance. It is about creating an equitable experience. Now, this one is like perfect, and how I always explain this one is the underground tours. The underground tours I got to go to when I could walk, you know, with a walker and stuff like that, so it was very cool to be able to see it. Right now, I could not see it. My wife, my son, everybody would go through there, and I would watch a video. In this age of time, that is kind of unacceptable because you have your kids playing these battlefields on the computer with this headset, and they are right in the middle of the, the whole scene. They talk on their phone, stuff like that. Why couldn't we do something like that with the underground tours where they just, or virtually, my wife could wear the camera that go through there, I could be asking questions just as long as anybody else. That would be equitable. That would be the same as me being in it. But, you know, I, so I can't. The other thing is, is they have a, oh, like a dumbwaiter out there at the sidewalk or something that they can take stuff down in there. Make that a handicap thing, so now I can sit there at the bar and watch and be spending more money while everybody else is doing it. So there's, there's all big ways of, of spending money, and we want to make it so things are equitable, that they're the same. So what I'm doing is, we want to put together, like, anytime I go anywhere, I put, I go to the Chamber Commerce of that town so I can see, you know, what's going on. But it really doesn't show me anything, so what we're doing is we're taking videos and showing the video, and can we...
I think we can.
So I can actually show you exactly what we're talking about on the, on the video that we're doing.
Okay, wait a second. All right, now, the volume.
Yeah, volume.
Yeah, but where is it? Uh, sorry, I'm not, I'm not hearing that. Is there anything else I can do?
I can't hear anything either.
At least we can see it, but I want 100.
Yeah, we have a, we have our IT guru coming up.
I wonder if that's because we turned off the speaker.
Yeah, because we probably don't have it on this.
Right.
Okay. Wait, wait.
Make the selection.
It says X.
Try that.
Hit the, hit something there, just click it. No, I don't think we're plugged in.
I think last time we turned that off on the...
I think you turned it off because of the...
Over there, yeah, because of the feedback.
Is there something else you can do?
Well, that's what I would do.
I was thinking of putting, like, a...
You're still showing me, that's good.
My agenda is on that one, and I just called it. Actually, he gave me a flash drive, and that's what I'm looking at here.
If you have a flash drive, I can break through it on my computer.
Do you want me to, but it's the same thing, you can't hear it.
Yeah, it's not on that.
It's not, it's not on that.
No, it's on the flash drive.
It's on the flash drive, and you do that.
I can hear that. Can you log into here? You have a quick email account.
So my Google?
Yeah, just type your password. Well, Darren, while they're doing that, I'll visit with you just a second.
Yes.
You know, this really hit home for me when you and I were both at the...
I need to make sure.
...new education downtown.
Yes, yes.
And it hit me when they invited all of us to go down to the underground and see it. And, and I'm ashamed to say that I've lived here my whole life, and that was the very first time I've ever been in the underground tour was down there. It was, was that day, and so I was excited to go, and, and when they said, okay, come on down, that's when you and I were visiting, and I'm, and I'm getting ready to go, and you looked at me and you said, oh, stay here, I can't go down there.
Right.
And that hit me like a truck, and I've never forgotten that. So, and I, I appreciate what you say and why you're bringing this to our attention today, so.
Well, we've, I found out that, I mean, what we want to do is a pilot project. And this with the, the sound, I mean, once, once you hear that, you can, you can actually see exactly what we're talking about. We're trying to, instead of going into the ADA and, and chastising people for what they do, we're trying to say, okay, look at all the accessible things. But now, somebody with a disability in, in Portland saying they want to come down here for the roundup, they can actually go to our page and see all this stuff about the roundup. They can see what they can do, what they can't do. They can also see the video of the places they want to go to, like the Pendleton woolen mills, or, you know, like that. You know, restaurants and stuff like that. They can see which ones, they can build an itinerary of places they want to go to spend their money.
Sure.
Because they have lots, lots of money that they can spend. When you do stuff like a party in Pendleton, that, that brings in a lot of people. But it doesn't bring in these people with lots of money. We want, we want visitors to come into Pendleton and be able to go everything they want to see. You know, and now they can look at it, now they can go look at something like, okay, well, I'm going to be here, but I want to go over to Milton Free Water. Oh, look, I can go to wine tastings here, 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 and I can go do this, that, and the other thing.
What's Tim doing right now?
So we would do that in these videos.
I can't call him.
We have professional people that are doing these videos. And they have like the drones for the, you know, going into the buildings, coming out of the buildings, the injuries, whatever. They have that, so what we would do is we would take the video and give them a flash drive of that video so they can use it for advertisement and stuff like that. Another, we'd take all the people in, like, Yumitilla, or in Pendleton, put all them people together on a flash drive, or on a main drive, and give it to the Chamber Commerce so they can put it on their website. When we do all of them in, like, Yumitilla County, we would take all of the Yumitilla County, and I would send it, well, to Todd Davidson, the, the guy that runs the, the Chief Executive Officer of Travel Oregon. And on their website, they would have a master of, so we're doing this as a pilot. Well, then we go on to other of the counties. And so he would have a master of all counties and stuff like that on his website so people can do the same thing, go there and see them all. So.
I think they're getting closer to video.
I think, yeah, I kind of, I don't know if Darren remembers this from 20 years ago, 18 years ago, but you're, you're an incredible advocate. But if you remember the Clay Walker concert at Yumitilla County Fair, I don't know if you guys know, Clay Walker has a son that has multiple sclerosis.
Clay Walker himself has...
And Clay Walker does, too, and his son, yeah. And it, so Darren came down with us during the concert, the concert that was going to be a concert. And Clay Walker was unable to be there the first, the first year, and then the next year he came. But Darren was such a strong advocate, and this wraps up Robert and Tom and several others. Between those two years, when, when Darren had just got kind of the first version of your, of your all-wheel-drive chair.
Yeah.
We went that year, Tom's crew chip-sealed almost all of, and with, with Robert's blessing is, almost all of the old fairgrounds, and we went from not being able to move people anywhere except for to the food booths, which spent money.
Yeah.
But, but at that point, you could see, after that, you could see animals, you could go between the rodeo and the fair, and it was, but it was because of your advocacy.
Well, that, that's the equitable part. I mean, like I say, you know, everything, the ADA is a blanket law for people with disabilities. I always bring in Marty Platt because Marty's, you know, a friend of mine. Well, the ADA expects you to have toilets really high. He hasn't been able to do those in a long time, you know. So it, it works for some people, it doesn't work for others. I mean, I hate to admit it, but for, for wheelchairs, it's perfect. But my, my stepfather had OCD, or I mean COPD. And at the roundup, he could never walk all the way around up to the handicap seats. He would have to go down and get different seats because he can't walk that far. Now, I can just go, I mean, now it's just beautiful for me to be able to go all the way up to the roundup, you know, up to the handicap seats and stuff like that. So you've got to figure out that if you see one person sitting there in the handicap seat, maybe it didn't get sold or whatever, and just somebody's sitting there, that's just one person. You get, you see somebody that's handicapping that spot, you know that he's there with multiple people, and they're all spending money. So being able to do this project is going to be able to bring in more people, more advertising and stuff like that for people with disabilities to be able to come this far because maybe they haven't, they're too scared to come to the rodeo because everything on the, the most, the scariest thing about people with disabilities is their front door. Everything on my side, I know I can go to the kitchen, I can go to the bathroom, I can do everything in my house. As soon as I open that door and go out, I'm at everybody's lea, I, I have to be really careful on where I go and where I don't go and stuff like that. So, but if I had a video of it, I would already see all the problems that I would have, and I could figure out how to go around those problems.
Speaking of videos, Dan, are we ready there?
Yeah.
Now, it's moved over.
Yeah.
Just have to be quiet because it will repeat the sound here, so.
Welcome to Pendleton Center for the Arts, housed in 1916 Carnegie River Building. The Center's efforts underwent a $20 renovation in 2000. The Center's efforts underwent a two-year dollar renovation in two thousand to upgrade the accessibility. The Art Center is accessible to most all disabilities because of the wide wheelchair room running to a four-foot automatic door and wide hallways. There is a standard-sized elevator going up to the top floor for the exhibits on it, along with their retail store and Panzer Hall. The Art Center also offers good-sized handicap bathrooms and hands-on art students. We are open Tuesday through Friday from ten to four P.M. and Saturdays from noon to four P.M. Admission to the Art Center is free, and we hope you will visit. If you have any questions about accessibility at the Pendleton Center of Arts, give us a call at five four one two seven eight nine two zero one.
There's another one.
Oh, there is another one?
Yeah.
Um, okay, which one is it? This Roosters?
Yes.
Hold on.
Paving in Pendleton, Oregon. We're proud to be locally owned and our success rests on the firm understanding. The great ingredients begin with the highest quality raw ingredients, the recipes we perfected over the decades, and our strong desire to please our guests. Whether it's taking the time to make fresh yam roll noodles for our famous Rooster noodle soup, or roasting the tomatoes and peppers used in our salsa, there is no detail too small to ignore when it comes to food quality. Rooster's accessibility is very good for most all disabilities. The dining area includes three rooms with large rooms and plenty of tables with adequate room around each table. If it's nice outside, they have a patio for outdoor dining experience. The restaurants at Rooster's have all been rehoned for ADA compliance to better serve the community. And for camping, Rooster's has its own, with great accessibility for everyone. If you have any questions about accessibility at Rooster's Country Kitchen, give us a call at five four one nine six six one one zero zero.
Now, the only, the, there's a difference in those two videos, and it would be for me, what I would be looking at the videos for, and we would have to fix that before we would give it to them. But they didn't show the handicap bathroom inside. Um, there's, it, it, um, thank you very much. But, um, if there's a handicap bathroom, and it's the right length and everything else, I still have problems getting in there and stuff like that, if it's a regular toilet into the floor. But if it's into the wall, my feet go underneath it. It's something that you never think about, but that's what I would be looking at inside that video to say, well, this is gonna be a lot easier for me than this, but, you know, I can get around it. So, um, but that's what we want to do, and, um, the problem is, there's, uh, for funding and stuff, because we have people that are, um, really doing an excellent job on this, and the voiceovers and everything else. So, we figured out, um, usually to get a house done, just an empty house, it's like three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars per year to have it completely 3D videoed, so you can, um, sell it and stuff like that. But with, um, the guys that I'm working with, and, you know, and we do have to have the voiceover sent out and stuff like that.
Now, just with, when you say I'm working with, is that in your role as Clearview? Is that...
Well, we work with Mobility Matters.
Okay.
Is what we're working through instead of, uh, Clearview, because Clearview is a nonprofit, government-owned kind of thing. You know, any nonprofit is owned by the government, and I, we just run it. But, um, and then you have, uh, rules and regulations, you have to be behind and stuff like that. So, with Mobility Matters, it's a lot easier to be working with. But we figured out there's two hundred and fifty businesses in Yumitilla County alone. And, um, what, we've worked it out, so we could get down to, for the whole thing about giving the, um, drives out, giving the, um, all that kind of stuff out, and paying for the voiceover, all that, we, we could do it for twenty-five hundred dollars a piece instead of doing thirty-five hundred and not having a voiceover and everything else. So, it would put us, um, I think it like, uh, uh, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do all of Yumitilla County. And, uh, that way it would, I mean, it would help not only people with disabilities, because that's what I'm aiming for, is helping people with disabilities. And it doesn't help them, it helps the economy, it helps each person that is on the chamber, you know, that's, uh, in the Chamber Commerce, and it helps the Chamber Commerce, because if somebody's, uh, on the verge of saying, I want to, I would like that video, you know, you have to be a part of the Chamber Commerce. So it helps the chamber, it helps the cities, it helps everybody all the way through with getting money from people with disabilities and stuff.
So, I like what I'm hearing from you, um, I really do. Uh, in fact, I visited with Carrie Walshley, and she's our tourism coordinator.
Uh-huh.
And she loves the idea as well. In fact, she couldn't be here today, but she's gonna be reaching out to you after this. She's gonna watch this online and, and then get in touch with you. But along those lines, I'm gonna try to speed this up, is what I'm going to do.
Okay, yes.
Uh, we do have an, an action item on our agenda, um, and the background of it is, is to assist in supporting tourism in Yumitilla County for people with disability, approval is sought to set aside funds in the economic development and tourism program for grants. The grants will be available for eligible applicants to fund projects to meet this purpose. Um, that's, that's our actionable item.
Okay.
And so, uh, I would like to ask the commissioners if they have any questions or comments to you.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, that's, the only thing that's not answered is something you don't ask.
Exactly. So, I, I just want to make sure that the commissioners have a chance to, you and I have talked enough, and I, I'm, I'm good, but I want to make sure that Commissioners Doran and Murdock have an opportunity to listen to you.
Couple of quick questions, Darren. So, who would be the owner of these videos?
Actually, the, the, um, the businesses would be the owner of it, because we would give them the flash drive of it. Um, and then the Chamber Commerce would, would have a copy, and so would, uh, Travel Oregon. Because we're working this as a pilot project, because it would be a pilot project, then I would go to, hopefully, a senator or somebody to get it through Oregon to where they can do all of Oregon. And then, once we get that, then Oregon would actually be a, um, a pilot for other states. So, if we can get it throughout the U.S., then anytime somebody with a disability wants to go, you know, like, I want to go to Montana to see something, I could just go to their website, you know, it, but it all has to be consistent. Um, that's why we want to do, want to run everything through here, so even when we do all of Oregon, it all has to come through Mobility Matters to be done, because it has to be, the videos have to be consistent with each other.
So, would you have a copy of all the videos of Mobility Matters?
No, I would do it through Travel Oregon. They want, they want to be the, the main.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But, but Mobility Matters is a for-profit company?
Yeah. Because if you, if you go with the nonprofit, then they have rules and regulations, like, um, like the ADA or something like that. We're not going with all of the ADA, but we're going more for accessibility instead of, um, you know, the rules and stuff like that. Can I access it? Um, and then we're letting everybody else decide on their own if they can access it or not, because now they can see it.
Any other questions?
Um, I guess, not from Darren, I guess just on the legal side of contributing to a for-profit company.
Well, grants, we provide grants all the time to profits.
Right, but then as, as it flows past that...
So, does that need to do with the grant money identified?
Unless it's contractual identified.
Right, but I mean, our, we don't distinguish between nonprofits and for-profits on our grants unless there's some specific reasons.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Murdock, did you have any questions?
Yes, I have a lot of interest in the project, because as Darren, Darren well knows, uh, we kind of launched this. He invited me down to Clearview, uh, to visit with me about the concept, and gave me quite a few materials, which I think I shared with the commissioners, uh, at, at one or two of our meetings after I visited with Darren. Uh, I think it's a wonderful idea. The reason I talked to you, Commissioner Schaefer, about a potential motion is that, uh, whether it's just support videos, but I think in a broader way, we need to give our chamber, uh, an opportunity with the latitude to advertise the fact that, uh, we are, we are, uh, handicap-friendly, Yumitilla County is handicap-friendly, and that we want to make, begin making people aware of tour, tourism opportunities, uh, for handicapped, to, to make this a kind of a center where, uh, individuals with handicaps that want to go out and, and see the state, uh, what could be drawn to Yumitilla County because, um, of the fact that we, we care about people with disabilities and, and want to make their experience a positive one. So, uh, if we're ready, I would make the motion that we, uh, proceed with the grant proposal.
Go ahead.
I just did.
So, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll read the motion. Uh, the motion is to approve economic development funding of twenty-five thousand dollars for grants to support tourism programs in Yumitilla County for people with disability. Is that, that was your motion, correct?
Yes.
Just, just before the second, a little more specific. So, are we making this to Mobility Matters?
You know, it was just to have a program for applications for grants.
So, the Mobility Matters is after the, to the next step to, to apply for the, okay. Yeah, I second the motion.
Okay, you got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren, I enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
And since you're still sitting here, we're gonna do this one real quick. Uh, this Transportation Committee appointed us, it's item number eight on our agenda. And, did, maybe there's, you guess?
That's me, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, she's gonna actually come up and, and visit with us, but I just wanted you to hear this piece.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. I'll, I'm not leaving, so...
Okay, perfect.
Transportation, this one?
Yeah, that one.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners, good morning. Megan Dobchewski, County Transit Coordinator. Um, this action item is before you today to follow up on the previous creation of the Yumitilla County Transportation Advisory Committee. Um, that committee replaced the STF and the STIF committees. Uh, we posted a notice of the committee vacancies. We have nine seats available, and we received applications. Uh, myself, the planning director, Bob Walder, and the transit liaison commissioner reviewed the applications and selected these individuals to fill those seats. Um, following the bylaws, three of these appointments are for two-year terms, and then the remaining six appointments are for four-year terms. All terms are set to begin July one of this year.
Thank you for your work on that. I know it's been a long road, so I appreciate that.
I would move for approval to adopt order number BCC two zero two two dash zero four two, the appointing the following volunteers to the UCTAC committees. Uh, two-year term Linda Carter, Kim Beck, and Jeremy Annberger. Four-year term Teresa Dutcher, Jose Garcia, Rod Hardwood, John, uh, J.D. Tubby the Third, Stacy Coons, and Heidi Ziegler.
And did I hear a second from Commissioner Murdock, didn't I?
Yeah, let me repeat that at the right time.
So, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye. And thank you to all the volunteers.
Thank you very much. Hope that sounded, got it. Okay, we're gonna try and speed up a little bit here. Uh, number one, Sheriff's Software Agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Wolverton with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, what you have before you here is regarding our CellBrite service. CellBrite is the, um, device that we use to download and analyze cellular data, uh, during investigations, and for that, we have an annual, uh, software update that, uh, we have to pay for. Um, this year, during our, uh, annual renewal, we discovered that the price of that was, that renewal was gonna go up. Uh, CellBrite offers multi-year, uh, subscriptions, and also offer discounts for subscriptions in a multi-year, uh, capacity. So, the highest cost savings that they have is a five-year software renewal, um, which, uh, we're requesting to get approval for. That will be a difference of, uh, where the new price will be about sixty-one hundred dollars a year. Uh, under this program, we'll be paying about forty-one hundred dollars a year, so a total savings of about ten thousand dollars. And if there are any other questions I can answer regarding that?
I would move for approval of five-year software renewal agreement with CellBrite in a total amount of twenty thousand dollars, or twenty thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Vehicle lease payment, is that you two?
Yes, it is. Uh, this one, back in March, we, uh, were in front of you requesting purchase of eight, uh, Dodge Durango police vehicles. Um, when we made that request, we made the, um, the numbers based on an initial quote, uh, rather than the final quote that included finance charges and some change in equipment costs from the time of approval to the time of actual purchase. So, we ended up with a difference of about twelve thousand dollars per year on the vehicle lease payment, so we're requesting approval for that additional twelve thousand dollars in the difference.
Per vehicle?
Per vehicle. Or, no, that's the total, per year payment, twelve thousand dollars.
The total difference is twelve thousand?
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
Any questions?
Uh, none.
I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval, uh, well, just a second. What, what we're asking for is four years for a total of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, which is the length of the, the lease.
The lease, yes, sir.
So, it is twelve thousand...
Per year.
One hundred and sixty-two per year over the four-year lease.
Yes.
For the vehicles, okay. We respectfully request approval for the additional cost of these vehicle leases in the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars per year for the four years, or a total amount of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
Second, yeah, motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Sure.
Phone call, appointment, looks like the sheriff's rolling up.
We drew straws, and so...
I have to read this one, because there's been so many.
Do you want the actual picture? You're, you're good?
I'm good. Now, uh, as many of, especially you, uh, Commissioner Schaefer, very familiar with Casey Ward. Uh, he's been a long-time detective with our organization. He's retiring actually tomorrow. Um, in terms of the CellBrite, uh, program, he has became, uh, the expert in that arena, uh, downloading those, uh, cell phone and tablet-type, uh, devices for investigative purposes. Uh, we would like to seek approval to have him come back, uh, in a part-time capacity after retirement, um, uh, based off of, uh, his current wage, and I think it's justifiable because of his expertise in that arena, as well as, uh, his expertise in conducting background investig- in that arena as well as his expertise in conducting background investigations and providing some training to our current staff. We're just seeking approval to, to move forward and keep him on as on-call basically, or as-needed type employee.
I believe it's similar to Nathan Good, is that?
Correct, correct.
And I'm, I'm familiar with the Celbright program and how intense that that is and how few people are actually trained up on that, so. And I've gotta admit, I think that was that video that Darren brought, I think it's the first time I've seen Inside the Roosters without Casey Ward in it.
Yeah, yeah. This is true.
So, no, I, I, so, yeah, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your request.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Transport officer position.
And for the record, I felt to mention Sheriff Terry Rowan, Sheriff's Office. Anyway, this has been something in the works over the last couple of months. Kimberly Lindsay with CCS has approached us in regards to providing secure transports for their clientele. So we, we, we put this material together. On the front end, we advised her that the only way that we could do this is, is really if we could add an additional FTE to provide those services. Back what, month and two months ago, we received approval for a second transport deputy. So this would actually add a third transport deputy to our program. And so in calculating out the employee cost along with some other expenses, we throw a figure out there of $147,500, which Kimberly Lindsay said that the board approved. But, you know, there's still some conversation ongoing, and this is just to get the program off the ground. I think both of us realize, both CCS and the Sheriff's Office realize that it could morph into something even greater than this as we move forward, but at least this would give us an opportunity to, to have ongoing evaluation of the program to make sure it fits both of our needs. To seek an approval for this position based off of the funding, and also seeking the assistance of County Council in putting together a contract, so that's kind of where we're at.
And as you know Sheriff, I sit on the Board of Directors for CCS, and, and this is a very much needed position, and I respect the fact that you, you found funding without having to go out to general fund dollars, so CCS will be able to fund this, it's my impression of that, so.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks sir.
Thanks Captain, appreciate it. Roller purchase. Mr. Fellows.
Good morning Commissioners, Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. Before you today, the Public Works Department went out for requests for a used roller, 84-inch single drum roller for compaction purposes on our county roads. Given our current situation and the way we're, we're operating, we found the need, we actually went out and rented one for a while this year because we were, we were short on compaction, so this would just be an increase to our current inventory on equipment. We got, had two companies, Respond, Pape, and Modern Equipment. They responded with four different machines, the machine that we're recommending to go with is the Modern Machinery roller, it's a 2017 DynaPack with 703 hours for the price of $101,900.
I would move for approval of the purchase of the CA 3500D from Modern Machinery for $101,900.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ico Bridge.
Yes, the next item before you, as, as the Commissioners are well aware, we had some bridge damage that required the closing of the bridge, bridge down on Mack Oak Road, also known as the Nolan Bridge. We went out for request, proposals for a modular structure. We had actually quite a bit of interest that where the problem came in was our timeline didn't meet all of the suppliers that were available out there. We did get one bid from Arisco, a company out of Seattle, for, to deliver a modular structure for $934,850. After numerous conversations with our consultant, we believe that this bridge will serve the county very well and are recommending the board approve the purchase of this bridge.
Being very familiar with this project, I'd move for approval to award the contractor, Arisco, out of Seattle for $934,850 for the purchase of the bridge.
Go ahead Commissioner Murdock.
Are we getting any support on this?
I don't know that I understand the question.
Who, who's, where's the money coming from?
Well, we've already, we've, we've done that Commissioner Murdock, we received an opportunity grant from the State of Oregon, and then we also through motion of these Commissioners, allocated $750,000.
So I've lost track, how much is the opportunity grant?
Immediate opportunity grant covers 50% of the cost up to, I apologize, I don't have, it does have a limit on it, I believe it was 1.3 million neighborhood, so, so the immediate opportunity grant will cover 50% of 1.3 million.
Okay, I second it.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen.
Oh, one more, the Digitize Pilot Project Grant, is that you?
That's me.
That it does relate to. Okay, I'll stay.
This is a request that was put through to the Legislature, last year's Legislature, for a pilot program for Yuma Tilla County to digitize all of the, the county roads. It's a, we've had several discussions on this, it's a complete expansion, a new project and also being watched by a lot of other counties in the state and outside. But this will be the beginning of that project, and this is just to accept the award from the State of Oregon. I would approve to accept the grant from the Oregon Legislature and authorize the Chair to sign a grant agreement.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now you're out.
Thank you.
Psilocybin election, did I say it right Bob? Close enough?
Close enough.
Close enough, I'll take close enough.
Your idea to touring, yeah?
Yes.
Good morning Commissioners, for the record, Bob Walder, Planning Director. Here today to present information for your consideration regarding ballot measure 109, the Psilocybin Program Initiative. And on November 3, 2020, Oregon voters approved ballot measure 109 statewide, it passed with a vote of 1,270 yes votes, or about 55% to about 44% no votes. However, it was not supported in Yuma Tilla County with 11,330 yes votes to 20,126 no votes, so roughly 64% to 30 pers, 36% opposed to it. What ballot measure 109 does is authorizes the manufacture and use of psilocybin products under controlled supervision and establishes the regulatory framework for oversight and administration. Ballot measure 109 is codified in ORS Chapter 475A, which is patterned after the current marijuana statutes and regulatory system, and ORS 475A goes into effect on January 1, 2023. So unlike the marijuana legislation, all jurisdictions are treated as having opted in to the psilocybin regulations unless the board refers the matter to the voters at the next general election and the voters elect to opt out. Whether opting in or opting out, the county may adopt time, place, and manner regulations with regards to land use, as Kent was an option with the marijuana statutes. Your memo provides an overview of the types of licenses that would be regulated by the Oregon Health Authority should the county choose to remain opted in on the program. The licenses include a manufacturer license, so that's for like the growing of the product, which has to be conducted indoors. Psilocybin Service Center, so that would be the facility where the customer goes to receive the treatment. And then a facilitator license, so this is a person trained by OHA to administer the product, and then a tester, which I'm assuming would be employed by OHA to do the sampling of what's being grown.
Is it safe to say that that will not come with any funds?
So the, the rule, the rulemaking process is still ongoing, but there is going to be a 15% tax on revenue from the sale of the treatment. And that 15% will go to OHA for the administration of the program.
So that doesn't come back to?
That doesn't come back to, that 15% doesn't come back to Yuma Tilla County. Now you might be asking why this is related to land use, and that this ballot measure probably has the most direct relevance to land use in Yuma Tilla County. Given that service centers are not considered to be healthcare facility, staff believes that this presents several options of what a service center could look like, ranging from a relatively simple clinical setup, similar to like a doctor's or therapist's office, to potentially more of like a retreat-oriented business that may involve an overnight stay and the integration of psilocybin production and manufacturing. And what we see, one of the challenges being is a lot of these uses would occur out in the exclusive farmland zone where commercial activities and, and things like that are something that you would typically find in more appropriately zoned areas.
So it sounds, it sounds like the voters pretty much overwhelmingly rejected this idea.
Across the state, it was passed, but here in Yuma Tilla County, the, the vote in 2020 was about 64% against to 36% in favor.
So in order for our, in order for the people of Yuma Tilla County's voice to be heard, we would need to refer it to them again to say?
Yeah, so.
Am I jumping way ahead yet?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm there right now, so what staff is requesting, the board make a determination whether or not the county should opt in or opt out about measure 109. Even though final rulemaking won't be completed until late 2022, the ballot measure does become effective on January 1. And so there are some concerns about that as well as, we don't know how all these rules are gonna shake out, and, and so that we're on a pretty tight schedule. The deadline to get the, the measure on the ballot for the upcoming election is August 19, I believe, and so if there's interest in putting this on the ballot to go to the voters to opt out, drafting should begin soon. Otherwise, we'd need to begin the process of developing, you know, time, place, manner regulations as part of our, our development code if we're gonna continue to remain opted in.
So to be clear, if we do not put it on the ballot, we are automatically opted in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Couple of technical questions Bob?
Yeah.
And they've come up from the municipalities. From what I understand, incorporated cities are not included in, in this law, that the, the use of the facilities and all of that has to be done in the county.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to get a little more clarification on that, and I, I don't know where the rules haven't been completely finalized, how that might pan out. I do know that the statute says it can't occur in a residential area, so that basically within the parts that are in our jurisdiction limits it to commercial industrial areas as well as the EFU lands.
I guess my technical question there was, if it eliminates incorporated cities, do those residents in those incorporated cities participate in the vote?
My understanding is it would be, it would just be the unincorporated parts of the county that would participate in the election.
I think we're depending on why, I think it would be everybody. It would just be unincorporated areas, I think it'd be any, all the res, all the voters in.
Even though they're unaffected?
Well, it's sort of tough to say because at this point, we don't have the rules. So we can't really guess, I mean theoretically, they could be in the cities, but they're, they're not giving any opportunity to opt out on like the counties are, so it's by county, it's the only one that can opt out.
I think it still does.
I believe I read somewhere though that a city would have to vote to opt out as well, but I may need to.
I just wanna make sure that if we put this on the ballot, we do it correctly, that we, we don't put it out there, vote it down, and then have to do it again.
I think that a lot of those questions, we might be better addressed at the time we.
Put it on the ballot.
Right, at that, at that point, we might have the answers to those questions. At this point, this is just more for discussion whether you want to start that process.
Gotcha.
Because if you want, if you, you wanna go to an, an actual referendum to where we'll have new ordinance?
Right.
With the public hearing.
So we're not putting it on the ballot today, we're just getting the ball rolling two foot.
Yeah, if you wanna start the process for that, we can, we can have it, there's room on the next board meeting for that.
For next week.
Pretty much clear the next board meeting after today, right?
Well, there's already a few items.
Doug and I can work together to get clarification on that Commissioner.
I just, I, I, yeah, I think it's, I, to me, I just assume everybody will, but I don't wanna do it twice and have to, to just come back to the county residents.
Yeah, understand.
Yeah, we'll have that as part of the ordinance.
Perfect, perfect. I would move for approval to put this on our agenda to start the process to opt out of BM 109.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
On-site septic program.
Mr. Chair?
Yes sir.
I, I, I would be interested in knowing as we move forward, several questions, just in terms of sharing this with the voters. The relationship to 110 and what a disaster that has been, and procedures by which the state has these things passed, they take the revenue and the problem is left to the county to deal with. I just think that should be a part of the conversation.
Agreed. All right, thank you. Do we have public health? Yes.
Good morning, Alicia Lundgren, Deputy Director with Yuma Tilla County Public Health. I am here to talk about the Gilliam County Septic Program. The county recently entered into an agreement to perform environmental health services for Gilliam County. That's going to be starting on July 1, and they've also requested that we perform their onsite septic services to also start on July 1 as well, and that is what is up for discussion today. And it is anticipated that all the, as with all of our other environmental health programs, that all the costs for the program would be covered through fees with no impact to general fund. And since onsite septic is also functioned under DEQ's delegated authority, what's before you today is a request to approve a IGA with Gilliam and DEQ to provide their onsite septic programs. And this contract looks very similar to our Morro County contract for onsite septic as well.
I think as, as the largest county in eastern Oregon, and certainly a county with regional capacity opportunities that many counties in our area don't necessarily have, I, I appreciate the fact that in certain cases, we've been willing to reach out and, and assist small counties in carrying out some of these responsibilities.
I'll second. Was that, I'm sorry, was that a move to, for approval?
Yeah, that could be a move, motion. Yeah, that could be a move, motion.
Second.
Motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And media contract.
All right, so the next one that I have is for discussing, discussing a renewal and expansion of our media contract with Eagle Media Group. For the last year, we've been working with this media radio station for interviews and ads, and we're requesting to renew this contract for another year. It doubles our package with them, both for radio interview time and ad time, with about a fifty percent increase in cost, so going from sixty thousand last year to ninety thousand for this next year. But again, doubling our coverage. And it includes all the interpretation and translation support that's needed for messages that are shared through this bilingual station, and all funding for it will come through our Oregon Health Authority program funding, no general fund being used.
I, I've had the opportunity a couple, well, several times to be a guest on some of their media, and it's always interesting, and I learn a lot every time I interact with them, but they seem to be a very good channel to the Hispanic community for sure. So with that said, I'd move for approval of the ninety thousand dollars for twelve months of advertising with Eagle Media.
I think we struggle sometimes to address our obligation for health equity for our, particularly our Hispanic population. I, I think this program that the health department has operated has been very, very effective, and I appreciate it, so I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number thirteen, chiller replacement.
Okay, Mr. Tanner was unavailable at this time, and so what's coming before the board is a request to approve a contract for new chiller at the Stafford Hansel Government Center. Request for proposal was issued, one proposal was received from HMS Commercial Services, and it's before the board to approve that contract in an amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars to approve the chiller replacement.
So my question is, I think the last meeting, we had a cap at a hundred and twenty. Do we need to address that?
It was part of the request for proposal based on the decision of the board when it authorized the request for proposal. So since it is over the amount, that can be waived if the board so chooses in awarding the contract.
I, I struggle a little bit with that because that pricing comes back from the requester, and I understand there's inflation, and I understand that there's a lot of other issues out there. But I was hoping that when this went out, that it would be noted that there was a cap on this as it was put out to bid.
And it was.
And it was. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Courthouse dampers.
The next matter before the board is as part of the air handle replacement project at the courthouse. It was discovered that all of the dampers, dampers no longer are functioning, mostly because the motors are frozen. And so the replacement of those dampers are estimated at forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. HMS Commercial, who has the contract for the air handle replacement, is willing to add this to the contract for that amount to replace the dampers at the courthouse.
You know when they could get started?
I believe they're working at it now.
Gotcha. I'd move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Originally, the Marines are supposed to be here tomorrow to start it.
Too windy. Yes, it'll be next week, that's my understanding.
Man, somebody knows more about the weather in eastern Oregon than I do, so it's not going to be windy until.
Yeah. Okay, maintenance payable.
The next item coming before the board is a request to pay to double S Electric for additional work at the new maintenance facility. The amount is twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. This is for electrical work, mostly for equipment and fixtures, and along with some services to complete some work that the staff couldn't do directly.
It's a little loud to have like the electrical for the machines that they use.
Right, it was primarily lighting, I think he said.
It says lighting on it, yeah.
And they did as much as they could, but then they had to bring in a professional to do some of it.
Any further questions or comments? Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Community corrections employment. I don't know if there's anybody from.
What's coming before the board on this item is a request to authorize a retiree to be a temporary special employee for a period of time after August one, when the retirement takes place, and it would be applied under the personnel policy four point seven with all of the conditions of that policy.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Election certification.
The. Did Mr. Lai want to handle this?
I was just going to say, is he on?
He is back on.
Yeah, but something's, I don't know why my camera's not working, so, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, sorry about that. We're also converting to the new recording, oh, there's my camera. We're recording, converting to the recording system, and I had to step out for a little minute, I didn't realize the meeting wasn't going to go this long this morning. Before you is for the recent, to certify the results, that we need a letter saying that you accept the results for the commission races, which position one and position two there were Schaefer and Beers will be moving forwards to the November election, and Timmons and Brower, Brower will be moving forwards to the November election too, so we just need you to accept those.
I would move to accept and authorize the election, primary election.
I assume that the record of this action encodes their full name, is that correct?
Yes, it's all in there, but they'll have to do a, you'll have a letter, you'll send us a letter accepting it.
Okay, second.
You don't have, so I, yeah.
Seeing as my name is one of the names there, I'm going to not vote on this, but I will call for a vote, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One extension?
I have one extension, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we're all the way to eighteen?
I know. Property liability insurance.
Property sales.
Oh, we're skipping that, well, that one's, that one's.
That's next week, yeah.
Okay, I knew that, just testing you.
All right, liability insurance is next week, I was telling, so.
Yeah. Property sales.
This is coming before the board to authorize sale of property as part of the auction on May second for the tax report properties. There were nine that did not sell, so what the process normally has been for the county is to accept written bids for these unsold properties for thirty days and then open the bids. We received bids on three of those, primarily the three Pendleton houses received bids, and all of the highest bids exceeded the statutory required minimum, and so those three sales were before the board for approval under separate action. The first one is for the house located on Alexander Place in Pendleton. Received the high bid on this one for eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars, and is requested that that property be sold to the bidder.
Do we need to make separate motions or how do you?
Yes, they'd be under separate orders, so we're asking to, order number BCC two zero two dash zero three nine.
Let me glance at the buyers real quick to make sure there's no.
The first one is Pearson Paul.
I move to adopt order number BCC two zero two two dash zero three nine.
Second.
Motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
The second property is on South Sea, in Thirteenth and Pendleton. There were four bids submitted from eight thousand to forty-one thousand, eleven dollars, and the proposal is to sell it to David and Kathy Zinter under order number BCC two oh two two dash zero four zero for the forty-one thousand, eleven dollars.
I'll recuse myself on that.
Okay, we have a recusal with that. Go ahead, Commissioner Murdock.
I said I'll make the motion. But you have, I don't have.
Yeah, that's what, I was going to make the motion since it's in front of me, so. But if you want to make it, I'll second.
No, you make it with a number, and I'll second it.
Okay. I'll move for approval to adopt order BCC two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four zero.
Second.
Second, there we go. Motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, a longer recusal.
And the third property is at four four seven eight six Mission Road. There were two bids from thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to sixty-one thousand. The proposal is to sell it to the highest bid of Pearson Paul under order number BCC two oh two two dash zero four one for sixty-one thousand dollars.
I'd move to adopt order BCC two zero two two dash zero four one.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So that's all of those, right?
Yes, that's for now, and so the remaining property is available for bids. It can be fairly hard to sell these, so it may be a while, but as soon as some are received, those will be back before the board for consideration.
Okay. ARPA funding.
Going back to the last one, I might have signed the wrong one on one of these, so I'll wait till it comes back to me.
Yeah, we are ARPA funding now.
I'd move to adopt BCC, order number BCC two zero two two dash zero four four.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, but can we read the background on that real quick?
Sure, this is coming before the board for the second installment of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. This has been, the second installment has been received, and so as was done in the first half, the focus is on one-time funding and products that will not require ongoing funding to maintain them. The funding is for joint investments with local community, communities as indicated by the direction of the board, and so these are before the board for approval. It's for assistance in development and restoring the economy or assistance for very small communities with limited resources.
And we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, motion?
Did you incorporate the suggestion I made earlier this week?
Yes, here's additional twenty thousand dollars added to the total.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here, you're not all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. CDDP payable.
She was unavailable.
Okay.
She might have been now, she didn't make the meeting, or the meeting would be done in time. What's before the board is request for payable out of the CDD program. This is for cost for reconstruction at clients' residence, and so the payment for that is before the board for approval of eleven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-three cents. These funds are paid by the state of Oregon on a reimbursement basis.
Move for approval to pay Chris Hopkins' construction of eleven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Motion, a second, all fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And Pendleton payable.
This is a payable before the board due to the dollar amount. This is for repairs done, repairs, actually debris removal from Mackay Creek resulting from the two thousand and nineteen flood. The city of Pendleton took the lead on this. Most of the portion of the cost was paid by FEMA, but the twenty-five percent deductible for FEMA is, as agreed, split between the city, the district, and the county, and the county's portion for this portion of the removal, of the sediment removal from Mackay Creek is sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
The nice thing about this is that FEMA had quite a bit less than when we first addressed this and gave them approval, so I think we authorized up to twenty-five thousand, if I remember, when we made that motion to support. But I would make a motion to approve the payment at the city of Pendleton in the amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents for Mackay Creek sediment removal.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Fairgrounds infrastructure grant.
There was an enterprise.
Oh, I skipped the enterprise zone, sorry, enterprise zone expansion.
What's coming before the board is a request to expand the greater Yumitila Enterprise Zone. The city is seeking to expand the enterprise zone to match its newly formed annexed property and city limits, so this would result in another hundred and eighty acres to the enterprise zone for the property located along the Powerline Road, as the co-sponsor of the county must also approve the expansion.
I'd move for approval to adopt order BCC two zero two two dash zero four two, the enterprise zone expansion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now let's do the Fairgrounds Infrastructure Grant.
This is a one million dollar award from the state this year. Several fairgrounds got anywhere from one to three million dollars awarded by the state of Oregon. We are in a, not a unique, there's basically two other fairgrounds in the state that share property or lease property from other landowners. So we've had several discussions with the city of Hermiston, the owners of EOTech, and what we've come to the conclusion is with the growth in the 4H, with the number of steers that are being shown and the growth that we're in, is it's been agreed upon to use these funds to begin the process of expanding the barns, EOTech, to handle the additional exhibitors. One, one note to this, this is also being added to a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar grant that was awarded the prior year to the owners of fairgrounds, but had to go towards the, a capital project on, by, for the fair. So we also worked with the city of Hermiston on that. That money has already been put into a portal and is moving through the city of Hermiston. I can guarantee you that a million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand is not going to expand all three barns at EOTech, but it will get us a good start and get us moving forward to that expansion. It's critical. Fair Board's been very much involved, the city's been very much involved, EOTech Board's been involved in individual conversations with, with the city itself, so I, I'm excited to approve this. I, I'd move to approve the grant from the Oregon Legislature and authorize the chair to sign grant agreement.
I would just want to make a comment for the record of a very, very remote possibility of a conflict, and then second the motion.
Okay, so I'll make kind of a remote.
So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Figure that, we're already at number 25.
All right.
Supplemental budgets. Mr. Paul.
Good morning, Commissioners, Robert Paul, CFO. We have two supplemental budgets to consider this morning. I'll read your summary.
Did you call the order? It's a public hearing.
It was a public hearing, okay. So this time we will suspend our regular hearing, or public meeting, and we'll go into public hearing mode for supplemental budgets. Thank you, Commissioner.
Again, Robert Paul, CFO, with a staff report summarizing the two supplemental budgets before you this morning. Budget order 2022-76, human services subcontracted service program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $20,000 and an increase in materials and services of $20,000. And budget order 2022-77, court security program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $40,000 and an increase in personnel services of $40,000. If there are any questions?
Any questions or comments from the Commissioners?
None from me.
None.
Hearing none, any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Hearing seen none. At this time, we'll come out of public hearing mode, go back into our regular meeting.
I would move to adopt budget order 2022-76, human service subcontract services program budget transfer.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt, seventy-seven, yeah. Adopt order budget number 2022-77.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, budget transfers.
Commissioners, it appears there are eight budget transfers before you for consideration today. I'll summarize them for you. Budget order 2022-75, special transportation STIF program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $100,000 and a decrease in contingency of $100,000. Budget order 2022-78, general fund, general county, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $40,000 and a decrease in contingency of Budget order 2022-79, general fund, computer information services, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in materials and services of $16,000 and an increase in capital outlay of $16,000. Budget order 2022-80, emergency grants program, emergency management grants program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $4,000 and a decrease in contingency of $4,000. Budget order 2022-81, the stimulus reserve program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $400,000 and a decrease in capital outlay of $400,000. Budget order 2022-8Q, human services, mental health reserve, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $250,000 and a decrease in contingency of $250,000. Budget order 2022-83, community justice transitional house program, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $2,000 and a decrease in contingency of $2,000. And finally, budget order 2022-84, general fund, general county, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in personnel services of $30,000, an increase in materials and services of $70,000, and a decrease in contingency of $40,000.
I would move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-75.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye. Move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-78.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye.
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 Move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-79.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye. Move for, to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-80.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye. I move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-81.
Second.
Motion, second. All fair the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-82.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair the motion, say aye.
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 Move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-83.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye. Move to adopt budget transfer order number 2022-84.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're gonna suspend our regular meeting again and go back into public hearing mode for fee ordinance amendment discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The fee ordinance amendments for this year before the board for a further second reading along with the public hearing and potential adoption, there not have been any fees added or changed since the first reading. The board wants to add you up to the proposed changes, there are not many this year, and most of them are for elimination of services that we no longer provide, along with a couple of increases.
Just the increases, though. That's okay. I know we've already heard them.
And primarily...
Harris Park.
Harris Park was the biggest one, yeah.
Yeah, and basically, it's more, there's not really an increase on this one other than for the cabins. Most sites are actually now all set at $30. We had some at $35, some at $30, and a tent site which are no longer are any. So they all be at $30 except for the cabin, which is $40 a night. They're increasing the shelter fees from $30 to $50 for the small one and the large one from $75 to $100, but there's no longer additional charges for occupants.
Gotcha.
The district attorney fees are basically recognizing new methods for discovery and charging for those methods. The actual fees are not increasing, it's just we now do most of it via electronic media and vice flash drives.
That was all, those are the ones that are pretty important. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners?
No.
Questions or comments from public? Hearing seen none. At this time, we'll go out of public hearing mode and go back into our regular scheduled meeting for action.
I'd move to adopt ordinance number 2022-05.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. With that, any Commissioner comments for the record?
Yes. Yesterday, I sent a memo with respect to the flood damage allocation for Echo. We had an emergency meeting and authorized $400,000. We received the invoice yesterday for the cost of the repairs. So there's a balance that at this point is remaining. What's our proposal? How would we handle that?
But, George, I met with those folks yesterday to a degree, and then we're having a larger meeting tomorrow. I'm not sure we've received all of the expenses. I know that we received the contractors' expenses, but I'm not sure we got the billing for the engineering, which I'm not sure is huge, but...
I don't have any problem with the proposed expenditure of the portion we did. What I would want, though, is some agreement or some accountability or something with respect to the balance. You meet with those people, you oversee the spending, but I would hate to have it so loose that it could suddenly disappear into the general fund of the city of Echo.
Yeah, I can't disagree with that. There's a lot of eyes on that, to be honest with you, not just from audit standpoint, but also from a regulatory standpoint on what can and can't be done. So there is a lot of people paying attention to that. So I think that you're correct in only reimbursing what is sent to us, not to give them carte blanche.
And the board approval was up to $400,000. It wasn't the actual amount, so...
I can't hear Doug very well.
Say it again, George.
I can't hear Doug very well. Do we only make that provision?
Yes, I mean, the board approval was only up to $400,000. It wasn't for the full amount, flat amount.
Okay.
So if it was $400,000, then that's what the actual reimbursement will be.
Perfect.
I do, and Commissioner Murdock put this in his public officials' update, I just wanted to read this as a thank you note from Dave Slot, county administrator, or the city administrator for the city of Echo. And he says, "Thank you for the thoughtful message in today's weekly update. All three of you deserve a lot of credit for saving those homes, and I want to personally thank you for the support. In all my 33-plus years of public service, I have never seen this kind of deep rooted support and trust. Best regards, Dave." You know, Commissioner Murdock thought that was important enough to include in his weekly update, and I think it was important enough to include in our, in the record for today. All right, anything else, Commissioner Murdock?
No.
With that, we are adjourned at a record 11:02.